So I'm going to invite my wife and the leaders of grace to come up.
Elders and deacons.
And you know, we characteristically have, you know, one business meeting a year. And we talk about vision, we talk about money, we talk about where we're going as a church, we talk about where our money has been going. Now unfortunately, we really don't have very good attendance at those meetings. You know, it's kind of crazy, you know, we say we're having this business meeting and we're excited about it and it's like, you know, we just have a few people that come. Now, I've heard some people say, well, you know, because you have open books and anyone in the church can come and look at the books anytime, we just trust you with our money. But anyway, we decided it might be good to have a meeting more than once a year and to actually include it in a service so we can actually get more people involved. Can you lock the doors, James? Only kidding. It's a joke.
So do we want to, we didn't have chairs up here for you guys. Do you just want to sit or do you want to stand?
Okay, so now I realize it's Soap Sunday and hopefully, I really hope we'll have time to get to that after this, but I just want to share some things with you. In December 2014, we purchased this building from Life Church. And you know, Bob and Kara and Mickey and I have been friends for, oh man, maybe 25 years, good friends. And in fact, my relationship with Bob goes back about 30 years. In fact, my relationship with his mom goes back about 35 years. In fact, she's been a lady that has prayed, been kind of a prayer partner for me for many years, and I really appreciate that. But not only was this building a great blessing for us, but it enabled Life Church then to go on and begin to refinish the old Hastings building for their new facility. They rented this building from us for most of 2015, and then in about the middle of November of 2015, we got the building. And it took us about a month that we did a lot of renovations, putting in new speakers, painting, carpeting, you know, most of it was cosmetic in nature, but we got in here on December 13th, 2015. It was my dad's 90th birthday. I remember that day very well. And it's been exciting, you know, we, purchasing this building was a big step for us financially as a church, but it was one that we really felt like God was leading us in. And everyone on the leadership team, through one means or another, felt that way, and we just felt good about it. In fact, I'm going to have Mickey just share the dream she had.
You know, it was interesting, when we stepped into the purchase of this building, we didn't enter into it lightly. And we felt like it was something that the Lord was calling us to do, but we really wanted to hold on to that loosely. And so I remember visiting with God and I said, you know what, we're not emotionally attached one way or the other, we just want to follow your will. So I said, I need you to show me something so that I know that I know, I don't want to walk apart from you. And so I remember, we were, we weren't even up here, we were on vacation, we were down. Thank you, Kevin, that's a great idea. We were down in California, and I remember going to sleep and I had this dream, and it was about grace. And it was interesting, I saw there was this picture and it was somebody in a, we were in a pioneer wagon, you know, going across the plains, and there's huge field out there. And so we're going across the plains and just thought, huh, interesting. And so then I saw that we got out and we took a wooden stake. There was nothing anywhere, and we pounded a stake into the ground. And then the next picture was, there was a small, a small homestead, and there was a few animals out in the paddocks. And I thought, oh, interesting. And then the next picture was this huge expansive ranch for horses. All the buildings were there, it was a manicured land, and everything was thriving. And I said, Lord, what does that mean, what's that mean to us? And he said, there comes a point in your existence where what you need to do is you need to put down stakes, and you need to build, otherwise the legacy that you leave is wandering. And he said, okay. So we really felt like that was a word about coming into our next season, which is why we, you know, as a group, and I'd shared that with all of the board, and we prayed through it. And so that's how we ended up coming into the purchase of this building.
Thank you, babe. You know, we're going to let others talk here in a moment, but I just wanted to say a couple of things. You know, we, the facility that we had before, we were really paying a pittance for it. We were renting it from one of my childhood friends that I'd grown up with, and he just gave us an amazing deal. When we stepped into this, it is about 10 times the amount of what we were paying, and that's not just mortgage, but that's also extra utilities and different things like that. But we have never second guessed the move that we made. That this facility is so much more functional than what we had. It's an amazing property, it's in a great location with so much potential, and we're still praising God for it. We paid over $800,000 for this, and that's after we, you know, put money into it, you know, just in painting and all of those different things. But fortunately, we had money in the bank, and we only borrowed $550,000. And right now, we only owe about $450,000. And Mickey and I, I know if you know us and have heard us talk, we're, I've already prayed with her. We're believing God for God to pay off this building. You know, when I drive up, you know, just like I used to do with my house before God paid it off, when I drive up to this building, I say, church building, I'm calling you paid for, in Jesus' name. 116 South Third Avenue, you're paid, in Jesus' name.
I just want to share that this isn't so much about a building. It's really about what God's doing inside the building. It's about people, it's about family, it's about creating a space and opportunities for people to come into relationship with Jesus Christ. We found that we just ran out of room at the other place. And you know what's really hard is when people come to the door and they don't see room for themselves, they say, oh, I don't need to go there. And we didn't want to do that. We just thought, Lord, we're going to trust you for results, we're going to trust you for space, but some of the things, and if you're new here, or if you aren't aware of some of the things that happen, like we have things that happen here almost every single day of the week, whether it is Celebrate Recovery on Tuesday nights, Monday night we have prophetic prayer and intercession, and everybody is welcome to come, it's open. So we have prophetic intercession and prayer, and we have Celebrate Recovery, awesome group. Wednesdays, we have a firestarter class, we have youth, we have other things that are happening. On Thursdays, we have music practice. On Fridays, periodically we have the singles group coming in. On Saturdays, there's the secret place, which is a prayer and worship time. On Sundays, y'all know about Sundays. So it's not so much about the building, it's just a safe place to create opportunities and the things and the people that come here, that's why we're here.
So as a church, we began to experience some financial pressure, I think it was about a year ago. And so Mickey and I felt that our part to help this would be for Mickey to get a job outside of the church. And we feel good, we feel fine about that choice.
Could I say something real quick? Now, I was bivocational for a long time. I've only been singly here at the church for about four years, maybe four or five years. So I used to work outside the church as well as pastoring at the church. So really, it's just going back to that dynamic. I have a financial thing, could somebody hand these out? I need one. Okay, you can split them up. And so, but we prayerfully considered, because we believe that we are called to lead and live the way that we want to teach others to lead and live. And part of that's being a really good steward, and so that's what our heart is to do. And so, as we're in this new building, which is such a blessing, we are so thankful. And expenses go up, we're in transition a little bit. I'm handing out a financial snapshot, just a company snapshot, and you can take a look, it goes back to 2013 through current at the top, and then it has our current year down in the bottom, those two breakdowns. If you want something more specific than this, please just let me know. I am happy to print out these reports. Most people say, just give me a pie chart. It's just like, okay, that's what we're going to do. So I, we prayerfully considered it, and I started putting out applications not too long ago, and I'm going to, I got a position with a little theater here in town, so I'm going to be their new managing director at the Little Theater of Walla Walla. Yes, so fun, because I grew up for a period of time there, so it's really like coming home. And I felt like I put on my heart that, you know what, there's a wonderful opportunity to bring God back into the arts and the creative endeavor, it's just like, because I love the creative arts. And so I'm seeing it as a complete blessing on both sides. So that starts this week.
Sure. The challenge to me, and let me say it this way, the challenge to us as a church is that Mickey does so much, much more than you realize. She's not just another pastor on staff, she's actually the church administrator. You know, she makes so many things happen, so many things fall on her desk, and she does them well. And so, the challenge is, and the opportunity is, for others to rise up and begin to embrace some of those responsibilities. Does that make sense? Okay, let me just talk a couple more minutes, and then we're going to let others that would like to share. This church was birthed from a desire that Mickey and I and others have had to see a church with a supernatural DNA, where miracles are normal and natural, where they take place every Sunday, where testimonies are heard of God encounters in people's lives. And you know, we've stepped into that in some degree for sure, but it's going to be so much greater. There's so much more that God has for us in this area. We've been called as a church to love well, to embrace hurting people, to love them with God's love, to create an environment where they can be healed and made whole, and where they can carry that same love to other people's lives. Years ago, I remember meeting with Hugh, and we were, we were in Palmeroy at a restaurant, and we climbed out and climbed in the car, and he prayed for me, and he began to prophesy a church where the wounded could come and be healed, a church where those that have been impacted by things in life could come and be embraced and be loved and be healed. That's part of the vision that we carry. Our dream is a church where people would actually step into their full identity in Christ, that nothing would hinder that, to create an environment that would empower people into their giftings and into their passions and callings, where that orphaned spirit is broken off of their lives as they come into the full awareness of who they are in Jesus Christ and the inheritance that they can walk in right now. See, all creation is waiting for the manifestation of the sons of God. The world is waiting to see those in Christ fully step into who they are so that they can experience God through their lives. A church where the integrity of God's word is taught to every age, where the word of God is honored, it's not diluted, it's not dispensationalized into the past, where it is embraced as the living word of God, exalted above the traditions of men, the philosophies of men, unaffected by the things happening in our culture. That's my passion, and that's my heart. Do you have the mic? Would anybody else on our leadership like to share?
But hey, I also just want to create an opportunity too, as after people are done sharing, but if you have some questions or something, please don't hesitate to ask, okay? We're family, family communicates. We're not going to be perfect at it, but hey, we're going to give it a go. So, all right, does anybody down here like the mic?
I have just a short thought, and that is, for any healthy family to be able to function well, to do what Jesus has called us to do here, as Dave and Mickey so well articulated, we have to be all in, in order for a healthy family to move forward. Everybody's got to do their part, right? Somebody's got to clean the bathroom, vacuum, wash the dishes. Okay, so I'm trying to keep it short, but it's that practical, it really is that practical. We're a family, things don't just get done magically, although we wish they would, you know. Cleaning ferry does not show up here either. And so, I believe the word for the word is this, pursue unity, pursue it. Pursue means you have to go after it. And in that pursuit, there will be great joy, laughter, friendship, relationship, the day, the former days of folks just sitting and observing, in order for God's kingdom to come, as will be done, just as in the book of Acts, everybody's got to be all in.
A participant.
A participant. So I think the Holy Spirit is just saying this. Pray, ask Him, Lord, in your loving grace, what's the spot you want me to take? Do you want me to vacuum? I'll take the bathrooms, whatever. Whatever it is that God wants you to do, just do it, and you'll be loved, and God will pour His grace on you, and by His mercy, we'll be all in in unity.
Amen. Thank you, Dave. Said the guy who hardly does anything at church.
That's a joke. So I wanted to clarify, so you guys know that I'm still here, I'm still, I'm not leaving you, right? Okay, so you know that.
Oh, I'm so glad.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere, I'm still here. I'm still pastoring.
Well, we're glad you clarified that.
No, I'm not done pastoring, I'm just shortening it up.
One of the things that I've been made aware of, in this, in the people coming and people going in this church, and is the remark, I feel like I'm in a family. And it's not so much what they're saying, but what I'm hearing from everybody out here. And like families, we're not all perfect. And we have to work at being a family, just like you have to work in all your relationships, you have to work at it. It has to be so meaningful to you that you're willing to put yourself out for your family or your friends. And I find it is, it's really interesting how God takes us in all our imperfections and puts us all together and makes this wonderful dessert, for lack of a better way. It's beautiful, it's flavorful, it's interesting, and I think that, my sense is, and it has been for a long time, that He is working with us for what's next. And it's as we enter into what He's asking us, our faithfulness to Him, whatever it is, that's what's going to project us into the next thing that God's got. So, anyway.
That's good word. Thank you. As you were speaking, I was thinking, I was listening too, but I was, the Lord reminded me of His motivation of getting me to do things in the church, because it's really, I'm kind of a passive person, I don't mind people doing stuff for me. But, yeah. But He had an experience, He had an experience for me that helped me to see how important it is that I step into what He's called me to do. And it was, I love hearing from God, and I love hearing what God has to say about me. How many of you are like that? Anybody out there? And we had an, I'd been here many times, I've been, I've been here for, actually, a long time, it's my favorite place. And we've had a lot of people come that are prophetic and in our old church, in the old church building, and they used to do what's called popcorn, where you'd stand up here and they would just point out people that God was highlighting to them, and they'd have a word, and, and I didn't get word, and I didn't get word, and I didn't get a word, and I, sometimes I'd go out and I'm like crying, because God, he's like, well, I talk to you all the time, Peggy, but I want to hear it from others, you know. So then the Lord pointed out to me that, you know, maybe others want to hear this too, you have this thing happening in your heart, and you hear me, and you hear what God has to say about others, and maybe you need to step up, maybe you need to be doing something besides sitting in the pew, waiting to hear God say something to you. So that's where my motivation came to, I started a Friday night prophetic class, and kind of learning how to have etiquette with prophetic, and we did some, we did it, I did it about a year, and then it merged into Monday night, and I've been doing that now for a really long time. But I, I will always be there Monday night, because I want to hear God. But I want to encourage everyone that if you feel like I'm missing out on something or I don't have time, you'll find that where that passion is, God's just going to bless you, and bless you, and bless you. And so stepping in, you know, to anything, if you have a passion for kids, you know, there's always Sunday school, there's always things that you can do with the youth. If you have a passion for music, there's worship, there's, if you have a passion for cooking, there's Sunday, you know. We could have other nights too, I'm sure. Anyway, there's lots of opportunities, so I just want to encourage people to keep in, we're the church.
That's good.
Hello, I'm Dave Hufford, and an experience on the people's side, this, tail end of this last week, I saw somebody in a local store, and we started talking, and talking church, and started talking about the people that have come and are no longer here, you know. And it popped in my mind, and I hadn't ever expressed it that way, but we've been in, and I want everybody here to reflect on their own lives, we've been in a season of upheaval. And if you reflect back a few years in your life, you may have some events that came along that you didn't seek out. But we've been in that season of upheaval, and I would say behind that, there's a spirit of upheaval. So I came Saturday morning, early, about 1:30, and I came in here for the appeal to heaven, and there's 10 people in here. And I'm going, whoa! You know? If you've been in church, it's amazing to get 10 people at 1:30 in the morning. I just, you know, it's like...
That's revival.
It is, and it, you know, it's a turning point. Because I, well, Lord, what about this season of upheaval? You know, and we know people that we loved, and they're no longer here, for whatever reason in their life. What about this? You know? Short to it, that season is gone, okay? That season is broken here. Now, will there be tests? There's always tests. If you went through school, they always had an extra test. But what I'm saying, that season is broken. And what we're going to see is brothers and sisters in the Lord that we knew and loved, they're going to return to the land, they're going to come back. Now, that may be for a visitor for extended times, but they're coming back.
You know, life happens to everybody, have you noticed that? Is it just me, us? No, okay. Do you know, thanks you guys for sharing your heart, it's a new day.
Amen. My name is Nelda, in case anybody doesn't know me, and I see three people that don't know me. I agree with the pastors about the DNA and their passion and their heart for the church, for the church. And my heart for the church is, as a matter of fact, during worship this morning, I heard it again, and the Lord says, will you make room, will you make room for me? And it's like Mickey said, it's not about us or the building, the building, okay? It's about, it's about what are you building for God? And it's a house of God. And if there's anything that I learned over this weekend, that we did the 24-hour prayer, that he said, who will build a house for me? He says, who will build a house for me that my spirit may come and dwell in there? So I see a lot of houses right here, a lot, every one of you is a house. And God wants to come in and live in there, and He wants to show, He wants to reveal Himself. And so, when I, when I first came to meet Pastor Dave and Mickey, the same thing, their heart, their spirit agreed with what I had in my heart, the vision. I had a great vision in my heart when the Lord touched me, and I saw, I went to, everybody knows Pastor Tommy Barnett at Phoenix, Arizona, Church Assembly of God. And I went there and I saw over 180 ministries in that church, 180. It's a big church, and of course, Phoenix, Arizona. But I, my, I was undone in my heart when I saw every type of gifting in every person. So I just want to let you know that God has, you have, you all have giftings, and you all have at least one, one. So once you start, once God pulls that one out and you start working it, then you'll have another one that you didn't know you had. And it just keeps going and going and going and going. Pretty soon, you're doing a lot of things. But it's because of the grace of God that gives you to do what you can do. So I just want to encourage everybody that's here today, even those that I don't know, that this is a safe place, and that my desire is, like I said, for God to build a church with His own spiritual hands, and not a church that man is building with his hands. That's my desire. And I've told God that since I first came to Jesus, I said, I'm not going there. If I went there and I said, if God's not building it, then I'm not staying. And trust me, I've had to argue with God on that one. And He says, just calm down, and He says, wait, I'm going to show you why I brought you here. And He did. I've been with these pastors here for probably 12 years now, yeah. So I ain't going anywhere until God says so. But I love this church.
Thanks, member.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I feel like I'm like at some meeting or something. Anyway, I just wanted to share that ultimately, our goal here is to not have Mickey be bivocational, right? I would like that to be a short season, but we have some things that we need to accomplish in order to make that possible. And as any family, you want to have a buffer in place for whatever crazy stuff happens in your family. And so, as a church, that's what we're trying to do right now, is we're trying to build a buffer, so that we can be healthy and wise and be good stewards of our money. And so, and I think the timeframe on this, of course, is God's, but how well are we going to listen to Him, and how fast are we going to obey Him, I think also plays a large role in how this timing plays out. And so I just, I want you to pray into that, what that looks like for you. If you've never tithe before, you know, I would love to talk to you about that. I have been the beneficiary of so many blessings because Rick and I chose to tithe. And I'm not saying do it for the blessing, but I'm saying it's going to happen. And so, that's just one of the things I want to say. The other part is this, is when this first started coming down, the line that Mickey was going to have to get a job outside of the church, I got a little ticked, just going to be honest. And I was not happy, because she does a lot, and she doesn't need to have something else to do, because she has enough to do. And, but God said something to me, and so I'm going to stick with that, because I'm not mad anymore, but I'm just like, okay. mad anymore, but I'm just like, okay. So he said, Sarah, you're, the church needs to grow. We need to, more people need to be part of the family. And when I mean part of the family, I mean like, you know, in a family, in a family dinner, when you all get together, somebody's got to make sure that all the chairs are out, somebody's got to make sure there's silver around the table, somebody has to do the dishes when it's all over, somebody's got to prep it. There's all these jobs that you do when you're part of a family. And so even the taste tester, we have one of those, like that's a legit job. So there's different jobs, no matter how little, no matter how big, no matter whatever it is, there's a job. And if you ask God, God, what's my job in this family, in this family, in the family of God, what is my job? I'm pretty sure that he will tell you. And so what he said to me was, is that there's a reason I'm taking you through this as a church. It is preparing you for what he has next. And I was like, oh, that makes sense. And so, hallelujah. And so I just think this is a real growing time for us. It's a growing time for our buffer, it's a growing time for our family, it's a growing time for where he wants to take us next. So I guess there's a lot of prayer involved in this next season, which is of course exciting. And so I just ask that you pray into all those things, deciding what your part is and, and where, where you lie in this big buffet, family buffet dinner, and, and what piece of the pie, man, this is crazy, what piece of the pie? This is, ha ha! You need to...
Anybody else getting hungry?
Oh, my gosh! I don't even know. Anyway, so hopefully I've created this great visual for you in your head of what we're doing, because this is funny. And you don't get to pick the pie. I'm just kidding. So we just love you, we want to be transparent with you about what's going on, and we want you to be with us. And we just, we are excited about what's next.
Can I see that for a second?
Yes.
Hey, I just wanted to clarify something. We are paying all our bills, guys. We're good, okay? We are meeting all of our financial obligations, that's not the part in question. And so that's, we're doing that, that's not a problem. What we're wanting to do is, you know, how many of you guys have ever heard Financial Peace University, Dave Ramsey? Oh, if you haven't done that, it's the bomb, it's really good. But one of the things is wanting to create a buffer, just to be a good steward. And I guess I should have shared that earlier, that's our heart. And so we aren't meeting all of our financial obligations, but with the added expenses of having a larger mortgage and all these other fabulous ministries that are happening, so good, that takes money. And so as we prayerfully looked at that, we said, Lord, we want to steward well. And so, but yes, we're not in the red, okay? We're paying all of our bills, but we want to do more, we want to be positioned well. Did you want this? Buff.
I'm going to have you toss it a buff over here.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Michelle. Anyways, I'm, now I'm just going to kind of piggyback off everybody else because everything was pretty much covered. But the one thing I want to add is that, you know, when we moved in this building, it was always presented, and if you know Mickey, you've heard her say, we do things so that, everything is so that. And when we moved in this building, it was so that we could reach more people, so we, oh, sorry, Mama, so we could reach more people, so we could love more, so we can help heal hearts, you know, physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually, and just love well. And that's why we're here, you know? And we just, we want to make sure that as a part of, you know, our family, that we all continue to remember that, that that's why we're here, so that we can continue to love. And, you know, I was going to use the example, you know, as part of the family, I mean, my son may just take out the garbage every day and recycle, but he's still a part of the family, he still has something to contribute. And we can do things on the front lines, like Sarah, and singing, or behind the scenes, like me, I'm all behind the scenes. And there's, there's, there's always a little bit, that you may feel like it was just a little bit, but it, it means a lot because all those little bits add up to a lot. Oh, and then the other thing I was just going to add is, I'm actually going to create a poster board with a big old thermometer on it, and so we can see where we're growing with our paying off the building. I think it would be a great visual, I think it would be fun to see, we'll just set it out there. And then you can see, you know, look, this is, this is where we have to get, and this is where we're going. And I just think that, that that will help, you know, visually, just kind of see. And then if, you know, we talked about tithes, and if you were here last weekend, was it last weekend I shared that testimony? Yeah. And, you know, since we agreed, you know, as a board, that we wanted to buy the building and move here, my portion of what I set aside every month for our offering, it just comes here, and it goes to the new building fund only. And you have the option, if you want to add into that, you can add into that on your own. And even, I think we had agreed to three years, was it a three-year? Kind of a campaign thing that we had started just to help pay off the building. But God already placed on my heart, and he's like, he's like, hey, the building's still there. And I'm like, yep, and I'm still coming to it, so I'm just going to keep going, like even when the three years is up, like, this is family, this is what we do. We just want to stay here so that.
So as you take a look at your snappy cool paper, thanks, James, for figuring out how to get it up here. That was good. It has the previous years and it has current year. So you can have it on your paper there too. So if you take a look at, stand up, so I'm not weird-er, I know. Hey. So we have the blue one there, it shows our income from 2013 through to this year, the green being the current year. And so that's our income, and the orange over here is our expenses. And you can see we're pretty well matched through the years, except when we get to 2017 and 18. And I guess that's one way to tell that, wow, more good things are happening because you have more expenses right there. See? Look at that. So there's more people, there's more supper church, there's more, you know, building into Christian education and all of those things that happen. And so this is a snapshot of where we are right now. That's it. Any questions? There's no green in November because we don't have any deposits and the information's not put in on the upper left-hand side. Any questions from anybody? The dot, dot, dot. Payroll, mortgage, church, I'm not sure, I have to go and expand the field, missions, we also, it's our heart and it's our DNA to invest in missions. So we support missionaries, both domestic and international as a church. We believe in that, the word of God needs to go out, it's the go of the gospel, and that something is dear to our heart. During this season, just to let you know, that is so important to us, it did not even cross our minds to stop the support of the missionaries and the ministries that we see that the Lord is using. That didn't even cross our minds. So this transition, going back to bivocational, was the only thing that we felt was an open option for us. If you want to ask questions, even after, if you want to ask them privately, please feel free to grab one of us. Anybody here? And we're missing some people from our team, or David.
Thank you, guys, for letting us actually have a meeting during a service and talk about this. Thank you, leadership team, for coming and... We actually are going to have time for a couple soaps, a couple soaps today. So just to introduce that, you know, I can't remember how many years ago that we started doing soaps. I would guess six or seven years ago, or has it been that long? But the first Sunday of every month, we have, we give people an opportunity to just share what God is speaking to them about, as they're reading their Bible, as they're having their devotional time. And this format just is just an excellent tool. S stands for Scripture. You know, when you read your Bible, you'll find that God will highlight a verse or a passage to you. O stands for observation, Holy Spirit, what do you, what do you want me to see from this passage of Scripture? A stands for application, now how do I apply this to my life? But what, how is this going to change about how I think or how I live? And P, prayer, Lord, help me, help me to put this into practice in my life. Who would like to begin this morning? Wow. Well, then do it. Then just do it, Michelle.
Yay!
I don't have this in the soap, but I want to talk a little bit about what happened for the...
Okay. So this soap is on First John 1 and verses 5 through 7. I pulled it out of the Passion Translation, but I also, on verse 16, pulled it from the New, New King James. So the verse, verse 5 is, "This is the life-giving message we heard, that we heard him share, and it's still ringing in our ears. We now repeat his words to you. God is pure light. You will never find even a trace of darkness in him." Verse 6 is, "If we claim that we share life with him, but keep walking in the realm of darkness, we're fooling ourselves and not living in the truth." And verse 7, "But if we keep living in the pure light that surrounds him, we share unbroken fellowship with one another, and the blood of Jesus, his son, continually cleanses us from all sin." And then just to back up, verse 6, in the New King James Version, it says, "If we say that we have fellowship with him and walk in darkness, then we lie and do not practice the truth." My observation was that darkness is the contrast of light, but light is the symbol of God's purity, wisdom, and glory. Darkness is the complete opposite. Salvation brings light to those in darkness. And while darkness can be cloudy and blurred to man, it is transparent to God. God knows the darkness, he knows where it is and what it contains, because he is the light throughout the darkness. When we're walking in ways that are contrary to God, contrary to his character, contrary to his words and his promises, we are walking in that darkness. And if we're walking in darkness, saying that we have fellowship with him, we're lying to ourselves and to others, because fellowship with him means time spent in his presence, which always concludes change in our hearts and our minds. It draws us away from the darkness and into his light. In his presence, we see and long to turn from any and all darkness within us, and this is how we practice truth, by humbling ourselves to him in his presence and allowing him to change us from the inside out. God is pure light, because he is love, and you will never find even a trace of darkness in him, as it said in verse 5. My application is to continue to be sensitive to the Holy Spirit, as he reveals any and all darkness that may be hiding within my heart, so that I can continue to be changed from glory to glory in God's presence as I fellowship with him, so that I can practice the truth in my words, thoughts, and actions in my everyday life. And to keep living in the pure light and share the unbroken fellowship with one another. And that goes back to verse 7. So my prayer is, Lord, thank you. Thank you for your reminder that none of this is about me, my works, my striving or my ability, it's all about you. Spending time with you, being humble to be changed by you, and letting your light and your love be my focus in what leads me and emanates from me. Thank you for wanting to continue to cleanse me and change me, little by little, all to bring glory to you and your amazing love. And for sharing your unbroken relationship with me that I may share with others. Through every trial, there is triumph, because you are always there. Amen.
We're going to take a minute, and Dory just wanted to come up and just share for a couple minutes, just about what, how, how the prayer time, the Appeal to Heaven, what, what happened there for her?
Yes, it was an incredible experience, an incredible opportunity. I don't think that you all realize how important this was, what happened. And I appreciate all the leadership in the church supporting this activity, because it's not easy. And especially Nilda, I want to thank her for being obedient, even though I don't think any of us really understand what happened. But this is a little taste of it, and, because Dave reminded me, and Dave, there was two prophecies that were given. And one was Dave talking about the Bethel, the heavens opened, the heavens opened at that event. And I was there the whole time with Nelda. And it was open heaven, and then I think Bob saw the angels, so there were angels in the room. And we don't, I'll just, anybody who wants the full thing, we've got it written down, the full prophecies.
I've got a notebook and a record, everything that everybody has heard, got mine, and good into...
But I just want to highlight, because the, as Dave said, there's been a turn with this weekend, because the heavens are open. And when you come in here, you're experiencing an open, open heaven. And the thing is, is that when you, there were so many people that got to participate and just be in the room, you don't even realize that just being in the room, the heavens were touching you, angels were touching you, God was changing you. And it's an opportunity that I'm so glad so many people came. The other thing is, the other thing that was so wonderful and so absolutely incredible answer to prayer, unity. We had four churches represented in this area with pastors and other intercessors. The group of intercessors from Life Church was here, I'm sorry, nervous. Anyway, and then there were, it was also regional, people from Starbuck, people from Waitsburg. So it was an incredible gathering of the saints in this area. And so I know that that pleased God. And so that it's, that we're on the forefront of opening heaven here in this valley. And I'm delighted to be a part of it, and I'm delighted that Nelda opened it, and that everyone should start understanding and looking and studying that passage, because Jacob had the vision of Bethel, had the open heaven, and he said afterwards, I didn't know that God was there. He didn't know it was there, but God showed up. So sometimes we don't have to even know if God's here, but he's here, and he's showing up.
So good. Who else would like to share a soap? Jan?
Okay, okay. Good morning. Are we on? Okay. I'm in Malachi 3, starting with verse 10 through, how far am I going? Through 12. And some of you know this one. If you've known my family for any length of time, you knew that we were suffering for many years with a poverty issue. And last year, thank God, that broke. We actually paid all our bills on time every month last year. And I'm praising God for that. I've had a habit of tithing for years, I don't even remember when I started. Tithing is super important. So I'm going to read this to you. "Bring all the tithes into the storehouse, so there will be enough food in my temple. If you do, says the Lord of heaven's armies, I will open the windows of heaven for you. I will pour out such a blessing, so great, you won't have enough room to take it in. Try it, put me to the test. Your crops will be abundant, for I will guard them from insects and disease. Your grapes will not fall from the vine before they are ripe, says the Lord of heaven's armies. Then all nations will call you blessed, for your land will be such a delight, said the Lord of heaven's armies." And I saw that, even when we were having trouble with finances, even, even though I had that issue, we still tithe. Last year, we broke through, the summer, we had an amazing thing, because I was, some of you know that I do a CT scan about every six months, and we've got great insurance, but I always have about $1,000 left over to pay off. So every six months, here's this bill. And I came into summer with that hanging over my head, we're actually up to a $2,900 medical bill coming into summer. And lo and behold, as school year was ending last year, I got calls from everybody I could think of that ever knew I was tutoring. And I ended up with nine students last summer. So we picked up $1,000 last summer. As I was ending summer, I was in a little break, coming into the new school year this year, I got an email from Wall Walla University, from the new chair of... And I'd taught for the university nine years ago, but haven't been doing it. And he says, "I saw on the list that you were an instructor. Would you be willing to pick up this class?" It's education, elementary school, music and methods. And I said, but the time they were offering it was during school, at prospect point, and I couldn't take it at that time. I said, "I would love to do that. I enjoyed doing that. Problem is, I can't do it during the school day." And he went scrambling around, "Let me get back to you." This is, you know, one day. Couple hours later, he calls me. He says, "If we move it to 7:00 at night, can you do it?" I said, "Yeah, I can probably do that." He says, "Okay, I'm gonna call the administration office, and as far as I'm concerned, you're it." And I didn't even apply for this. I didn't even know it was open. And he says, "As far as I'm concerned, you're it." And so, I've got, I'm teaching an education class at the university. It will pick up the rest of that bill. $2,900, it will pick up the rest of that bill. And so, I just, I just wanted to say to you that you cannot outgive a good God. You cannot outgive a good Father. He will always meet you where you need, and He will always cause it to expand. And tithing is a way to open that door. So I would just love, why don't you grab your pocketbook for a minute? And I would love to pray blessing on your pocketbook. How's that? Try it. Test Him. He is such a good God.